Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Raywood City Council meeting at Monday, June 7th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. I'll ask for a question, please.
That's great. Those gracious heavens, Father, you have far beyond given us more than what we deserve. Lord, you have been so gracious to us and to this city. And, Lord, we pray that those who are not physically, mentally, or emotionally well, that you would surround them with your wings of peace and love. And, Lord, give them the peace that only you can give. Lord, we ask you to be with the city, its employees, who work hard to try to do the right thing for the citizens of this town. And, Lord, give us wisdom to be the leaders and provide the leadership and guidance that the town needs in order to survive. Lord, we thank you, we bless you, we give you all the honor and glory. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please say it for the ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Michael E. Suggs.
Here.
Councilwoman John S. Goss.
Here.
Councilman Louis C. Hardy Jr.
Here.
Councilwoman Andrea L. O'Grady.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelly Dee Gerald.
Here.
Councilman Carol D. Page Jr.
Here.
Councilwoman Tanya F. Sykes.
Here.
Internal Administrator, Treasurer, Angel Labors.
Here.
City Attorney, John C. Zalinski.
Here.
Thank you. We begin tonight with Communications, the mayor's report. Been a busy month here at City Hall. Budget preparation has been the priority for our administrator. It is very close to being finalized. We are on target to approve the final reading of the budget ordinance prior to our July 1st budget deadline. Several projects to improve infrastructure are continuing to move forward. The SCDMT projects on Highway 701 and Highway 9. 701 appears to be a little further along than Highway 9 project. They are on target for completion in a few months. The grant we have for replacement of two main sewer lines is moving forward as scheduled. And those are grant funds that were received from the state of South Carolina. During the month of May, we had a fox from our code enforcement building department and Mr. Zalinski, our attorney, and I met with several recounting officials and our county councilman for this area, Mark Causey, committee party, to discuss ways we could work together on major projects to affect Lawrence and surrounding tiny incorporated areas of Lawrence County. One of the main topics we talked about was stormwater management. If they needed an easement from property owners along the main ditches here in this area, so if you have property along the ditch and are willing to give an easement to the county, please let us know. Or if you have friends that do, let us know that too, so we can put them in touch with the county. Put them in touch with Mr. Fox here in the building department. You may have heard the city clock again striking each hour. Caroline's system hasn't been repaired. It's been used on the morning, late, places, patriotic music once an hour here that afternoon. And speaking of Memorial Day, the wreath ceremony on Saturday, May 24th at the State Theater Building. It was very nice and solid tribute to the veterans who gave their lives defending our nation and our freedoms. Thanks to the council members and city staff members who were present. Kevin Brazel did a good job of organizing the event. And thanks to the Lawrence Historical Society to make your venue available at the State Theater. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Samantha for the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, I appreciate you mentioning that for Memorial Day. It was a, I mean, it was not a happy ceremony, but it was a very touching ceremony. And I encourage everyone that has not yet attended that to please come and make plans to come because we want that event to grow because it is a very important event to remember those that have lost their lives and gave it to us for our freedom. So I am asking each and one of you, please make a plan to come next year to join us. On the day of the day, we have a lot of things going on at the Chamber of Commerce. Of course, we are always supporting our businesses and providing the city of Lawrence. And coming up, you'll see some filming next week. So we've got some commercials and some lifestyle content that is going to be made next week in downtown Lawrence, so you can see the camera crew here. I don't know if y'all noticed, about a month ago, we had a camera crew here. Mark Causey sent them our way. They're called RV There Yet. So this Saturday, we will be featured in RV There Yet Storyline. We'll have a segment in that coming up on Saturday. Saturday, actually, is when it's going to air. But it's coming up, they had never heard of Chicken Box, didn't know what it was. So Mark sent them my way and told me to make sure that I, they had been to Chicken Box. So that's what I did. So we have a lot going on. We are going to do that annual bank holiday back this year. So that's coming up. Again, Oxford North Fair will be coming back this year. So that is in progress to be in June, hopefully in the June. And yeah, so we've got a lot going on. And we probably would like to sprinkle a few events in downtown Tuesday. Something to do about this summer, if you can't do it every Tuesday, it's just really hot. But throughout the summer, at work, we're probably some downtown Tuesday. So we can give the city of Lawrence a present of the new year. So that's all we've got. I appreciate it. Samantha, did I see that on June 17th, there was going to be a car show? So actually, some local fire departments is getting together. How'd you meet in that? I don't know about that all right here. And they are going to do a fundraiser for Donnie Strickland. I said that name correctly. Donnie, Mr. Donnie Strickland. And so we're going to have a crew seen. And it is free charge, it's not about anything. They'll come in and drive their cars. But they're going to have a fundraiser for him. He is a local fireman that is needing some medical help. He's sick, so that is June 17th. And I appreciate you meeting in that. And we got a senior head for the, I think, our, our, our. So, but yeah, that's six days, I'm going to be on Tuesday, so it's six days. Local firemen are going to use the big trucks and, I don't know, some other. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. We'll turn it out to our administrator for the administration.
I have a few things. I passed out a new day conference, seeing you with May 30th. And going back to that skip grant that you were discussing earlier. So the first phase was the Pinewood Street here. They were replacing sewer lines and van holes. That's where we're wrapping up. And the next phase will be starting at Rogers Road and continuing all the way to the Vagora Pump Station, placing all the sewer lines and refurbishing all of the van holes during, during, between those two areas. And I do have a couple of committee meetings that I would like to take place in the next few weeks. Personal finance and the rate department. And that's all I have.
Public and community meetings during the month of May. So we'll move to department head reports. Who's been providing to council the written reports? Anything additional for the code enforcement?
I don't have anything to add to it other than it's been a lot of, aside from this year.
Fire Department, Chief Harden.
I believe I'll send any of y'all's reports on the United Avenue. I don't have any sense of access.
You have smart detectors and carbon non-satellite technology available. Anyone needs one, and those of you who need one, does anyone have a fire department?
In by City Hall, we met our fire station, they did some applications. Right over the table is the fire station. Probably maybe possibly get them on flash either way.
And those are free.
Free charge.
Fire department assisting installation. You all, Chief. All right. Chief Bult, police department.
I'm doing, how's it going?
We had a report, looks like it's been a busy month as usual for you. Public Works Recreation, we have their written reports. We'll move to the business items now. First item on your business is second reading ordinance 01-25. That's the ordinance granting franchise to South Carolina Public Service Guard also in the same Cooper to maintain within the city transmission lines and distribution system. This is second reading and first reading. And our R V, is there a motion? It must be approved on second reading.
I'd like to run it through the third meeting.
Second motion. Motion by Mr. Hardy. They said about his cause, there's a need discussion of ordinance 01-25. Here, none will call for the vote, Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Gerald.
Yes.
Ms. Page.
Yes.
And Sykes. And I vote yes. I am a B, the second reading ordinance 02-25. This is an ordinance annexed 58100, an acre, and a quarter of Lawrence. It is R 1.4. And as long as you're mindless, exactly where that property is.
So you have the illustration also attached to the ordinance as well. Essentially, it makes, it's property that makes the intersection of the Tyre Hall and Rose Road. It's one of those we refer to, commonly refer to as a, a donut hole in the city. That's where everything else pretty much surrounds it, is in the city, but this is not one. So that's one they requested. They were planning to star utilities, went through pre-annuation process, and now we're going to full annulation.
Regarding ordinance 02-25, is there a motion?
I make a motion. Will we approve that in the next session? Of 02-25.
Motion by Mr. Page, second. Ms. Gerald, need discussion. Here, none will call for the vote, Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Gerald. Page.
Yes.
And Sykes. And I vote yes. Move to item C, that is also second reading ordinance. This ordinance is good read, dash 25. Ordinance annexed 2.04 acres, acres, and a quarter of Lawrence. As long as.
So this one again, you also have the illustration attached as part of the ordinance. This is another one of those we refer to as a donut hole. It sits at the corner of Fox Day Road and 701 North, essentially right next door to St. Frank. And it's sort of what's referred to as the old horse pasture remaining part of it.
And that will become U S C to.
Yes.
Is there a motion regarding the second reading ordinance 03-25 to annex 2.04 acres?
I'm going to read, accept this. And that's, it's a.
And then motion by Mr. Hardy for approval on second reading, is there a second?
I say.
Second, on the Sykes, any discussion? None will call for the vote, Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Ms. Page, yes, and Sykes, and I vote yes. Item D is first reading ordinance 04-25. That's an ordinance to rezonate 1.9 acres from R 1 to C 2. As long as.
So this one again, you have attached to the ordinance is description and burial location. They're kind of pick where it is. This is on 701 South. This was property that was annexed into the city back in 2003. It continues to the city, and it's due to the portion of the railway being annexed in the C 2. Essentially, it would be continues to C 2, but it was annexed in 2001, so it's best rezoned to C 2.
This is the property that the planning commission had a public hearing on and they made the recommendation to council to accept. Last week, the recommendation was to approve the rezonate.
Yes.
And we had a public hearing in front of council last week. Any意见 on that?
Yes.
Is there a motion regarding this particular ordinance, 04-25, that's due for first reading? This is the ordinance to rezonate this property from R 1 to C 2.
I know that we rezonate 04-25, 1.9 acres from R 1 residential to C 2.
We have a motion to approve rezoning property, is there a second?
Second.
Second, on Ms. Coleman, any discussion? Here, none will call for the vote, Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy, there.
Yes.
Ms. Gerald.
Yes.
Ms. Page, yes, and Sykes. And I vote yes. Item B is first reading ordinance 05-25. That is a budget ordinance for fiscal year 25-26, which begins July 1st, ends June 30th. This is the half first reading. So we prepare to have a lecture workshop next week. And we will have second final reading of the budget ordinance on the 4th of November. Is there a motion regarding the first reading of the budget for 25-25?
I move that we accept the information given here regarding the budget and prepare to follow through.
So having the motion to approve it on first reading.
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Sir.
Motion by Mr. Hardy, second by Mr. Page to approve it on first reading. The ordinance to adopt the budget for fiscal year 25-26, as the period begins July 1st, 2025, ending June 30th, 2026. Any further discussion? Here, none will call for the vote, Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Gerald.
Yes.
Ms. Page, yes, and Sykes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Move on to item B, that is a resolution for council tonight. It's a resolution altering the section 504 agreement procedure and reasonable accommodation policy for the city of Lawrence. I hear it's a good, we'll find this.
Why, this resolutions are even twice of the city. They are required by the state for to receive extra or any grant funding to have these two in place. And they have to be renewed every so many years, and this is the year that needs to be renewed.
Here, that is our motion regarding the resolution 05-25.
Okay.
Have a motion by Mr. Hardy to adopt the resolution, is there a second? Second by Ms. Gerald, any discussion? All right, we'll call for the vote, Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Gerald.
Yes.
Ms. Page, yes, and Sykes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Item G is to receive the planning commission report. And this is regarding the petition for annulation of 359.19 acres off of Carriage Road. The planning commission report. Please, I, as long as you give us a summary of your, your, please.
So essentially, planning commission had a public hearing to hear a little feedback, comments on the proposals of this annulation. Based on the size of the annulation and some drainage concerns, zoning concerns. At the moment, planning commission has recommended that they are deferring that or defer to the discussion and review of the planning commission label. So essentially, that's what this letter is stating is they've not, have not reached a recommendation for rezoning district. We would like to discuss more, and it's just an update for city council. However, the planning commission is in process.
Mr. Hardy, we need to move to second here report, just receiving that information.
Just received as information.
So that is the report from the plan, planning commission, that matter is deferred until some future time. Item B is authorization to renew contract with Orey County regarding municipal court service and employment of county magistrate, the servant, as municipal judge. We've been doing this quite some time, contracted with county for many, many years to use the county magistrate as a judge. Contracts are supposed to be no more than four years. I'm not sure when the last time was. Actually, a new one, that's why somebody jumped tonight. And I know the personnel in the finance committee was talking about this. It's only there for, for.
I do, that, if you're going to start copying them, I'm going to ask Ms. Gerald to be honest with me. Thank you. The personnel in the finance committee made with Judge Hudson. And it's the committee's recommendation that we continue our contract with Orey County and appoint Judge Hudson to be Judge Butler's successor. I make a motion that the city continue to use the services of Orey County magistrate as municipal court judge, and that magistrate William N. Hudson be appointed to succeed magistrate Aaron Butler as judge of Lawrence Municipal Court, effective upon the retirement of Judge Butler, and that Mayor Suggs and internal city administrator Angel Neighbors be authorized to sign the documents required by the county and state to finalize the appointment.
Hearing motion, is there a second? Sir, any further discussion on that? Buck will be retired this summer. We have to give a successor, Judge Hudson. Has been Judge Butler, backup judge for, gosh, nine, seven years now. Issued warrants and bond hearings and indictment court. Judge Hudson's unavailable. He's recommended to fill the spot of Judge Butler currently has. So that is part of what we're doing here, and staying in the contract with the county. Any further discussion regarding that? Got a motion by Ms. Gerald for second, is there a second? Second, by Ms. Page. Some will call for the vote, Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Page, yes, and Sykes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Item I is a discussion and possible authorization of expenditure of hospitality tax funds for purchase or repair of holiday season decorations for our town. The holidays will be here before we know it. There's always the need for additional decorations sometimes, or to prepare the decorations we have. We run into a situation sometimes where the vendors for these decorations have sales during the summer, part of the holiday season gets here, and say we're giving them money by doing that. So we would think it might be prudent to go ahead and approve that amount and be available. So if we do run into an opportunity, we need to buy something, money is already appropriated, and the city administrator has the authority to spend that money for some specific purpose. Some of the decorations are somewhat expensive. And the last time we did this, I think we appropriated, I think it was 20 or 25 thousand dollars for that purpose. So I just want to bring that to the potential council tonight. And see if there's any, any recommendation, any feeling we should issue, which might want to do this again to be in position to purchase any that's needed for the holidays, you know?
So anyway, I have to say, you mind? I don't know if I can or not.
You can, go ahead.
I was just going to say that we have little start of creation here. They make decorations for dotted wood and Six Flags and all that kind of stuff. And I would really love for someone to go over there with me and let's look at, see what they got and see if it's something that could be here. Because we have it in our backyard that we have. And these people are making booby crops and decorations for all of these fun places. And I think it would be really cool if we could look into, at least see any, something we could afford.
Sure, that's true.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So what? Again, some awesome. They would have been authorized to cap a certain amount of money up to, up to a maximum to give, to measure a bunch of work and to be armed for that purpose. Okay. Okay, so well, what can I probably be considered?
Excuse me, somewhere 20 and 25.
I believe, late last year, early this year, we got some additional decorations out of the amount we could add a maximum, not if you see that around. Somewhere that, 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 that. Not really, I see it all, but just have that a little more. Yes. Do need to approve and can be used for this purpose.
What about 10, 130 pounds or not? Since things have been going up, 10.
That's what Kevin wants to do.
That's good.
This would be from the hospitality tax. That is a proper expenditure from hospitality tax, which is not a fact. Do you want to find? So is that a motion, Mr. Hardy?
Yes, dear.
Can I second?
The authorized a budget of up to $30,000 for replacement or repair of holiday decorations. Administrator having the funds to spread those funds for the necessary items you really need purchased.
Yes.
Is there a second? From anyone?
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hardy, second by Ms. Coleman, any further discussion on that? No, we'll call for the vote, Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Ms. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Gerald.
Yes.
Ms. Page.
Yes.
And Sykes. And I vote yes. Those are all the business items that we have for tonight. It's now the chance for the public and press to have their comment period. We have some folks signed up tonight. First is Stacy Lane.
Okay. I teach school, but I don't like talking in front of you. All right. City Council, how often do you hear or see an ambulance around town? I live two miles outside of town on 701 North between Lawrence and State Line, and I hear and see ambulances several times a week. It is very convenient for our city to have an ambulance nearby. How would you feel if it took an extra 15 or 20 minutes for an ambulance to respond if you needed it? Because that's what our county is considering. I don't know if y'all know this, but at the April 10th, Orey County Council's Spring Planning Retreat, Ms. Jamie Norman presented a 10-year capital improvement plan and debt service. She stated that the Fort Town Fire Station will be converted to a fire and E M S station. Mr. Barry Spivey, who I believe is the administrator, presented the service level and growth analysis in which he stated that Fort Town expansion would happen in 2026. That is next year. He also said, and I quote, "They were looking at a couple of relocations." One they were talking about currently was the ambulance in Lawrence actually moving to the Fort Town Fire Station to better serve that southern part, that middle part of the county between there and Longs. I urge the council to look into this matter and make sure our city has continued ambulance coverage. The Lawrence Fire Department has enough room to house an ambulance and their staff. Start the conversations now before it's too late.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. We were fairly aware of that. And remember, some meeting during the month of May with the county was an issue that all the people came up at that meeting. And I think the discussion's over again. But I would encourage you, talk to your county officials about that.
Okay.
It's very important.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph Jay.
Like to address the council, people in the room. I feel like I'm a captain soul. We moved here last year. We bought a house on Harvey Ave. And we are not getting any services from the town whatsoever. We had a baby at two streetlights. Now we still need another one. We had a home invasion on the street next door, which is on part of Harrelson Ave. All right? Where's the cops? My biggest complaint is if you go by the road and you look at the ditches, there's water still there, nobody's dug the ditches up. As a health hazard, it breeds mosquitoes, get all sorts of diseases from mosquitoes. I know you have nothing to do with the pond, so I'm not going to address that issue with you. But I've talked to you, Mayor, and I expressed my concerns about the paving of the road. Erickson Ave is paid. The upper part of Harvey Ave is paid. The pound, the science street, it goes across at the very top of, uh, Harvey Ave, is paid. I spoke to you, and you said, well, you were going to look into, and see if there was money from the county to the payment. And it's a little ludicrous, you sit here and say, I'm gonna give thirty thousand dollars for a type of races, when the road isn't being paid down below. And when I asked you about it, you said, huh, I didn't know that wasn't paid, I didn't even know it was wrong there.
I did not tell you that, huh?
You told me, because you didn't realize the roads were not paid.
I did not tell you that, and I've talked several times, I've known those roads over there since I was a boy.
Okay, well, then, you said you were going to touch with the county, you said we'd get back, we're down here, Matt, we're joke. You never reached out to either one of us. All right? We're a good one. We all pay city and county taxes. I just paid nineteen hundred and forty-six dollars in taxes issued. All right? All them houses over there are between two and three hundred thousand dollar homes. All right? I'm sure every owner who's here have paid his creatures, where you live. It dries up, I wash my car, my house gets filthy, my car gets served, dust comes in my house. All right? I'm not asking for the same thing that everybody else gets. I'm not asking for anything out of the ordinary. And all I address you, we've had problems in the past, you got us out, and I hope that we can get this settled and resolved. But we, but when you said to your company you're gonna pay thirty thousand dollars for decorations, and not pay that road?
Well, you got, you got to understand that. The expenditure we just approved for possible holiday decorations comes from hospitality tax funds. Those are limited funds that governed by state statute, that's what you can do, you cannot pay roads with hospitality taxes. You're limited to, that's the tourist related things, things that draw people attention. You cannot use that money to pay roads. The city of Lawrence does not, does not have a road made yet, we own all the majority of the streets in the city. Streets are owned by the South Carolina, I'm in the park, and some by Ori County. We have to rely on those entities to pay streets, I'll explain this. I've talked to the chairman, vice chairman, rather than the county transportation committee, the northern location, about those particular streets. I've talked to our county council representative about those streets. I would love to have those streets paid for you, and we're trying our best to make that happen. But it takes time, and we don't pay them, it's gotta be the state or county fund that gets it done.
So where are my cash dollars for this?
Your tax dollars go for other services the city provides, and you're not even worth paying your business, we don't hold streets.
Oh, you saw your burger down there, it's a while, I see burger from down in the center.
And it would have, it would have to be, it would have to be the state of the county, as long as we don't have a. I mean, I would love to have them paid just as much as you would, I got the streetlights in there for you, there were no streetlights at all.
No, ma'am.
And it hadn't been for a long time. Now, in San Antonio Cooper, they sent one of their representatives through there, I went to the neighborhood with, he was at Max, he was at Turner Baseball, their guidelines were the streetlights, that's where they are, so we're trying.
And did we get a little more patrolling through the area, especially for the, that's where you're not, no?
Chief's back there, he's listening, chief, I'm sure you can take care of that.
If you patrol a bit more through.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's all I have to do.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jack.
Thank you.
And then Ms. Paris.
Mayor, council, um, just a few words, the, uh, and I'm gonna say something about the, the ambulance. So, back when I was mayor, we did have a discussion with the county about the fire department and housing the ambulance. So there, there was an opportunity at that time to house that ambulance in that fire department, but it was turned down. Councilman Mark Causey, Councilman Danny Hardy, both from City Chief Hardy, and Chief Hardy said, there will not be an ambulance in my fire department. And you can ask either one of the people as to what that conversation was about, but that was when we were discussing. The ambulance went in there and also did the possibility of Ori County helping with that fire department, that, that full time. So that discussion was made, and their decision was made based on that discussion to go to Gore Town instead of saying Lawrence, so that opportunity was here. And that opportunity went out when, when that happened, so that discussion was had, and that's the reason the county made that, made that decision to move that.
I don't recall us having a meeting regarding that, or having any type of discussion, or you're a regular councilman, or both.
All right, I'm sure you don't, councilman, when Councilman Causey and Councilman Hardy talked to Chief Hardy. He said, it will not happen, and rather than fight that battle, they said, we'll just do something else.
I believe that Chief Hardy would take his marching orders from the council, if it ever came up, and we could have.
Just, just.
Rather than get, rather than have hearsay everywhere, why don't you get Councilman Causey and Councilman Hardy to come here, and we'll get to the bottom of the whole story. The whole story started, the mayor tried to ram it down our throats. But they were welcome to come here, there's no problem, it's just the way it was handled before.
I'm familiar with the story, I've talked to county council in county, um, and the magistrate about this variation, so I'm familiar with it. Those are all folks assigned up for public comment tonight, um, we have an executive session, only, Mr. Slips, if you have anything before us, executive session?
I have nothing for you, uh, or councilman.
Members? All right, we don't have anything for executive session, so, yeah, being the second, I'll have ten emotional major.